Row.
Uh, no, it's Deputy Attorney.
Oh.
How about that? It's like, whoever answers his email, got it. How about that?
Tom knows him.
We do a new gal. They all do. They all do. We don't wait to hurry. We eat up.
What do we do? What's going on? What do I do? What do I do with this?
That's where this went too, I heard.
It's not worth it, yeah. Doesn't deserve the light of day.
Yeah. Other than don't scare our employees. You do?
Yeah. Do you hear about that? Like, they were making think, they thought it was pretty funny. They came in and they dropped the letter off.
What they did?
Yeah, they even, the guy said to the staff, say, why don't you open it right now and see what happens? Like, laughing about it.
I had no idea about the background.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. So that threw our employees out.
Mm-hmm.
The post office could have held it, had Chief Ingram or Herbert come over and look at it, and just never would have happened, but they thought it was kind of funny, so.
You don't have any idea what's going on behind this wheel.
Yeah, so me and Chief are calling the postmaster tomorrow to let them know.
Yep.
Hope we better start. I don't want Councilor Doherty getting mad at me from the beginning, so.
Like to welcome you out this evening to our regularly scheduled meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. Um, before we do begin, I want to make sure to get our people in the audience for an item that was continued. I know we've sent letters out, but just wanted to make sure they don't sit through any portion they don't have to be here for. This was for the continued item from last.
I don't think that was me.
Okay, good. So, um, this would be for the case that was heard last. For the council meeting, it was for Prairie Creek subdivision, so they needed additional time with the irrigation district. Uh, one of the questions was about connecting that pathway, and so that will not be heard July 18th. So again, we did send notices out, just wanted to make sure everybody saw that. If you're here for that item, you can say if you like, but for that item, it'll be heard next. City Council meeting on the eighth. Is it, okay, so, yeah, well, we'll, yeah, that would be after the, after the, you know. Okay, so that will begin our meeting. With the invitation offered by Pastor Bob Larson of Calhoun Church. We stand for their prayer and then remain standing as we do the pleas we immediately follow. I don't see him coming forward. Pastor Porter, do you mind? If you are here, then you had the feeling, didn't you, that you would need to be here?
Sure, sure. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this time and place gathering of leaders, of leaders, citizens. We thank you for our city and what a incredible, uh, yesterday was across this place. Thank you for the privilege that we have to live here. May you continue to bless and prosperity for all citizens, not just a handful, but for all of us. We thank you for the good things that are happening. Praise this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge with the flag of the United States of America to the Republic of America, one nation, one free, open, indivisible, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Porter. We appreciate all that you do for our community and being, again, willing to stand in for that. Um, are there actually, Madam, please call the roll.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Here. Here. Here. Here.
Very good. So we do have, um, four members here, present with this, Councilman McGee is joining, and Councilwoman is unable to be with us this evening. So we do have a forum. Um, are there any conflict or interest of many members of council regarding any items on the agenda this evening? Okay, so then that was a special presentation, and I see our good police chief Ingram. Could you please come forward? And the podium is yours. Your special presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Happy, happy July. We survived Caldwell. Um, first and foremost, thank you again. I just want to highlight the last couple of weeks. Couple of weeks. Um, for public safety in the city of Caldwell has been a strange, more than normal. We've had several critical incidents that are extremely high risk, very low frequency. Um, one of them which I'm going to talk about tonight. But I just want to highlight, you know, we, we, yesterday was a huge, huge day for the city of Caldwell. And what these officers and the fire department and all the officers across the Treasure Valley did to make sure that Caldwell was a safe place for everyone to come over and enjoy. Yesterday, took a lot of planning, took a lot of resources. And what it did was created an environment where people felt safe. And starting with the run in the morning, then the parade, and then the fireworks show last night. So I just want to say, thank you, um, for supporting us, Council, Mr. Mayor, for supporting us and kind of letting us be the public safety expert. And, uh, you know, I know that it's not easy having fireworks blowing up all night, but the incident that I'm going to talk about is one of several incidents. Specifically last night, our officers rescued a family out of their backyard as their house burned down in flames. But this is what our men and women do every day, they come to work. And I say, depending on the dollar. Because a large majority of the American public doesn't understand why any human being, and we're only human, would run towards a burning building when people are trying to get out, would run towards buildings that are falling down in 9/11, when they know that they're probably not going to survive, would run towards gunfire when everyone else is running away. And that's what police officers do and firefighters do every single day they come to work. So this incident that I'm going to highlight, uh, and I'm, and I'll talk about why we're doing this tonight. I'm going to read the press release, and then I'm going to talk specifically about what goes into the mindset of how to respond to these things. June 14th, 2023, a man who barricaded himself inside of an apartment in the 2,700 block of Blackfoot Lane for several hours has been arrested. At 6:00 AM today, Caldwell Police responded to disturbance call between two parties that were known to each other. The call reported the man, identified as 40-year-old Joshua Russell, was a poorly armed and possibly armed. It was then discovered that Nampa Police had attempted to stop Russell the night prior, however, he fled from them without being captured. During the course of the investigation this morning, officers were able to establish lines of communication with Russell, who refused to submit to arrest while taking a barricaded position inside the apartment. Russell informed officers that he would not be going back to prison and would use any means necessary to ensure that he would not be arrested. Due to the statements from Russell and the belief that he was armed with an unknown amount of weapons, officers evacuated the apartment building. Caldwell Police SWAT was subsequently activated, however, due to deployment staffing, the Nampa Police Department offered their assistance and quickly deployed their tactical response team to the scene. After several hours negotiating and communicating with Russell, he peacefully surrendered himself without incident and was arrested by the Caldwell Police Department. He's facing several charges, including state probation violations. We want to thank our Caldwell officers who responded to the call, the Nampa Police Department for their exceptional response and leadership, the Canton County Sheriff's Office, Idaho Department of Probation and Parole, and the Caldwell Fire Department. We also want to thank the residents for their cooperation during the situation, as well as Valley Church for opening their doors and allowing first responders to use their facilities during the crisis. Now, here's my quote. This was the second SWAT activation in 48 hours that our brave men and women courageously responded to. Historically, Nampa and Caldwell SWAT teams have never deployed together. However, today, this unprecedented cooperation resulted in collaboratively capturing the dangerous fugitive and bringing him to justice without incident. There will never be a perfect incident, but today, the unified response of all involved should be the benchmark for successful SWAT missions. I am extremely proud of everyone involved and like to emphasize the leadership matters. So after that, which is kind of another day in the office for our men and women, I was going through my mailbox in my office, and I came across a really nice, uh, letter that I opened up. Is James here? Come on up here, James. So, I get a, I get a letter from Mr. James Runzold, who's the chairman of the Committee for the Promotion of Non-Lethal Enforcement Outcomes. And this award says, "Know all you by these presents that on June 12th, 2023, the Caldwell Police Department demonstrated a high degree of professionalism by exercising commendable patience, restraint, and good judgment in the discharge of their official duties to, uh, to it, by subduing and taking into custody Cody Burnett without resort to deadly force at likely tangible risk to their own personal safety." Now, I just want to say thank you for this in public at City Council for this nice recognition.
Sir?
Um, our officers do a thankless job at times. You can stay up here. Our officers do a thankless job at times, and most of the time. And when we use force or we go into a situation that we're dealing with an armed individual who is telling our negotiators that he will do whatever means necessary to not go back to prison, that means he's willing to sacrifice his own life to go down for the cause, or his cause. And so our officers, believing that, have reverence for human life, and that's their guiding principle in law enforcement. And so I just want the public to know, and thankfully, we have committees like the U-Chair that understand that this job is very tough, and we have to make split-second decisions. And our officers are scrutinized for the rest of their life based on a decision that's presented, or a decision they have to make on a situation that's presented to them. And this individual was arrested, and I actually put it on our social media and said, this is what success looks like. And he came out with his hands up in the air, and we got a good picture from our drone, because three hours prior, he said he's not coming out.
Right.
So not only is he criminal and fugitive, he's a liar. But we just appreciate the partnership that you guys have, and I didn't know of this, this organization, but it also ensures that we're accountable for our actions and that the community is holding us accountable, just like the City Council does and the mayor does. Because we're here to serve you guys. We're here to serve the public, and our badge says Caldwell. It doesn't say me, I. So, thank you very much. I'll hand it over to you for a couple of words, but I just want to publicly recognize you for the thank you of our officers.
Appreciate that, sir. Well, I started this, uh, this program about eight years ago now, and whenever I see in the paper that a situation like this has been resolved peacefully, I, I feel like a little positive reinforcement is a good idea. So instead of criticizing police officers for the decisions they have to make, a lot of time, a no-win decision, uh, I try to reinforce the idea that we take people into custody peacefully and that the law can take care of them from there on. So that's what this is all about. I have a confession to make, though. The organization consists of one person, and that's me. So, I'm sorry to mislead you, Chief.
It's okay, sir.
But anyway, I do appreciate, uh, what, uh, what's been happening around here with law enforcement the last couple of years, and, uh, it's all been good. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runzold. I just want to close by saying, and reemphasize, you know, our police officers have a dangerous job, we all know that, but in the state of Idaho, we only require 14 weeks of training. Yet an attorney has to go through almost six years of school to make decisions that are made in a courtroom, and then when, they can take breaks and recesses. A doctor has to go through 15 years of education to make decisions. But yet, we hear the bad, we hear the negative. We hear that police officers, under duress and stress, are making decisions that are impacting people's lives forever, but the praise never comes. And we don't do this job for praise. We do this job because we're serving leaders and we want to serve and protect our community. So it's just nice to know that we have good people in our community that actually want accountability but are supporting us. And our men and women do a thankless job, and I really appreciate them. Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. We appreciate that. And thank you for reaching out, for providing that letter. Um, they do do a tremendous job, and we're, we realize that, but it's nice to hear the public have that acknowledgement as well, so we appreciate that very much. Um, uh, so there was nobody sent up for audience participation, just want to check and make sure, um, if there's anybody who wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda before us this evening. Okay, very good. And so with that, then, moves us into our consent counter. And as was mentioned, I appreciate the reminder, we do have one item that has been requested to be removed from the consent counter, and it was either three or five. I'm trying to remember, number five. Thank you very much. So do we have a motion for the amendment to the counter for that?
So moved.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
So that's again to remove consent counter item number five, and to locate that as?
7A.
7A, under new business. All those, is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion passes. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent counter as amended?
So moved. Second.
A motion from Councilor Doughty and a second from Councilor Stoddick for approval of the consent counter as amended. That one we will need to vote for. So, um, with that, um, now, are you able to vote, Councilor McGee, from home?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I have a brief announcement, Mayor.
Okay, excellent. Okay, then that is open for voting this time. Very good. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously and approves the consent counter as amended. That moves us into old business. Um, as mentioned, old business action item number one has been continued, um, to July 18th, uh, so our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting, and that'll move us into action item number two, which was continued from June 20th. Uh, this is for a time extension, um, for Topaz Ranch West, number one. We appreciate you being here this evening, Mr. Brown, in regards to this item. So with that, um, Mr. Jones, if you want to do, I know that we kind of went over this last council meeting, but if you could just do a quick synopsis of this, of this, um, item, and maybe, so real quick, before we get to this, maybe it's already been discussed. I know that Councilor Stoddick was not at the last meeting, um, so Mr. Attorney, just kind of clearing there on that. So would he need to abstain from this since it was already discussed before, or what would be the? We did not go through this before, Councilor Stoddick.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stoddick, um, the, i- if Councilman Stoddick has reviewed the record from the prior meeting, I think he could participate. It's administrative approval, it's, uh, in the criteria, relatively straightforward, but, um, if, uh, he doesn't feel that he would like to, he's certainly welcome to abstain.
But up to, up to him. Sounds like a lapse, if it'd been more of an administrative item. Okay, very good. So just want to clear that up. Okay. Okay, Mr. Jones, time is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Alex Jones, Associate Planner, 621 Cleveland Boulevard. Uh, as I said before, this is, the applicant is requesting a time extension on Topaz Ranch West, number one. Uh, I was not present at the previous, uh, meeting, but it sounded like the applicant was not present at the time. Uh, there's been no changes to the plan, and I stand for questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Alex at this point? Okay, very good. Okay, and Mr. Brown, if you don't mind taking a few minutes and just let us know about your request.
So, uh, we're requesting a time extension of six months. Um, we are ready to start pouring concrete and have built all the underground improvements. I, I understand that at the last meeting, which I was not made aware of, that I was supposed to be here, or else I would have been, uh, that Mrs. Long, um, one of the neighbors adjacent, had some concerns. Um, our superintendent on the job side has met with her. She's sent an email to, to him and to city staff. We're in agreement with those things. Generally, those items are something that you kind of do when you're adjacent to a property, and a good example is a privacy fence, you know, uh, before.
You are muted.
Not you. Not yet, I'll, I guess. Uh, you had a barbed wire fence or electric fence because it was a farming activity, and now, you know, we're putting in a wood fence, which is, or a vinyl fence, uh, which is a part of doing land development, and some of those were part of her concerns. Other items, uh, with this approval, uh, we're required to put improvements in front of her house, uh, sidewalk, curb and gutter, there was approaches that she wanted. We were following what city staff was telling us, and, uh, city staff, talking with Rob, that they're in agreement to allow her the access points that she's looking for. Uh, that's the negotiation that they did as a part of, uh, the land deal, of getting that land to, for us to be able to put those improvements. Uh, I'd stand for any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any questions? Just real quick, that was, we were having echoes on our YouTube streaming, so that's what that muting was for, that you heard, so. Okay, any questions from council? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. And April, I believe you are here? Yes, so if you please come forward, and you'll have three minutes for your testimony.
April Long, 4112 Marble Front Road, Caldwell, 83605. So I sent a letter, and I guess it didn't get received. I checked with, uh, Mr. Lockwood, the superintendent for Trilogy, and he did say that he received it. And I wrote this letter, and I'd like it to be on record, so I'm going to read it to you. Um, Mayor and City Council, this is a follow-up email as requested by Cory Lockwood of Trilogy, Idaho. I spoke to him yesterday, 6:29:23. He has agreed to fix and take responsibility for the following items. All irrigation flood and drainage issues resulting from the changes to our property in the close proximity of the new subdivision boundaries. He has said they will see that all the flood, our flood irrigation water stays within our property boundaries. He said that this may include grading changes with windrows, berms, trenching, grading, et cetera. So that, I don't know what it's going to include. Number two, build out the planned privacy fences to be built around our entire property that borders their subdivision as soon as possible. He said it could be done as soon as the grading is completed. Finish repairing and leveling our property due to the digging on the easement access road along the Horton Lateral Canal. Cory Lockwood has stated that Rob McDonald, Caldwell City Engineer, gave him confirmation that we will have five access cutouts on our property, including two existing current large driveways, one for the irrigation easement on our property, and two 12-foot at the east and west side front yards where the gates are currently installed. This will allow access of the riding lawn mower and any necessary machinery needed to access for the care and maintenance of our home. Number five, the front fence seems to have been repaired at this time they came out, and he said it was guaranteed to hold up this time. Number six, all trees on the east side of our property will be trimmed by a tree company paid for by them. I didn't put that in there, but he knows. To prevent existing limbs falling into the new subdivision properties while not causing damage to our trees. Number seven, all weeds on their property on immediate border of our property to be sprayed to stop them from encroaching on our property. This should be done right away because they are already encroaching. Uh, I said, we are hoping all of this will be done in an efficient, timely manner. We want our home to function as it did before the development started. We hope no other consequences of the development will cause us any need to ask for remedies to fix any unforeseen problems. And I said, please let me know if you can, if these things I have written that are not understood or agreed to. I do plan to attend the meeting on July 5th. And I texted Cory, and he said, yes, it looked fine. So he confirmed that everything in the email looked okay. Rob did not get it, and I should have probably sent it to you guys, too, so. I did?
Yeah, so we do have, I have it actually right here. So it's Exhibit CC 1000. So real quick, though, before we do move forward, so we did get a, we got a text from Councilor McGee, um, says, the YouTube feed unfortunately put the Zoom audio on mute. Audio feed went out, so is there anything, so what can we? I'm thinking the Zoom is probably more, I mean, we want, obviously, to broadcast it, but we need Councilor McGee to be part of the meeting through the Zoom, probably.
We should probably be recording the audio.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, let's do that, I would say, because we definitely need, uh, Councilor McGee to be able to hear what's going on so we can vote.
You are unmuted.
Okay, very good. So we will, sorry, one sec. We just want to check and make sure that our counselor from afar can hear what is going on now, so let's just check with. Actually, are you there, Councilor McGee?
Yeah, I can hear, it got cut off. I think we're trying to solve maybe another, another.
By solving one problem, we created another. So, but we're glad to have you back on that.
I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay, sorry about that, we just wanted to make sure we're good on that. So we appreciate it, yes, that letter is in, it's, uh, CC 1000 is the exhibit number on that, and just basically exactly what you just read on that regard, so. Any questions from council, from Ms. Long? Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's, yep, it's on you.
So as I listen to that list, uh, most of those, I would say, except for the accesses to Marble Front, uh, which, uh, from Cory, he's telling me that Rob's okay with that, uh, those are standard, you know, construction things that we end up doing, and we reroute an irrigation ditch, we have to make sure that, you know, water continues through, it's a state law, um, same kind of things with, we don't want to be flooded by someone doing drainage, and that's just kind of the give and take that you have as a part of doing standard construction, next to existing, so. Any questions?
Very good, thank you so much, Kent, appreciate that. Any questions from council? Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, with that, I'll stand for a motion to close the public testimony portion of this hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilor Doughty and Secretary of Councilor Stoddick, close the public testimony portion of this hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion passes. So that moves us into deliberation and any motions, uh, from the council at this time in regards to the approval.
I just, if you didn't mind, Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, Mr. McDonald's name was thrown out quite a bit as having approved things. I just want to confirm that you're up, you're good with things as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilman all good. Uh, yes, I am. Uh, we, we had discussions over the last couple of weeks after the last council meeting, and I believe everything is resolved. And one of the major issues was the access, and so there are a few additional curb cuts. They're, they're not really access points for driveways, but they're curb cuts so that she can get access into her yard at certain locations in case she needs to, or for mowing or whatever. So, yes, I agree with everything that's been stated.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm ready for a motion.
Yes, go right ahead.
Based on testimony and evidence and record on this matter, and upon finding a fact and conclusions of law, I move that TE 23-10 for plat time extension be approved.
Very good, so we have a motion for approval of the time extension. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion from Councilor Augen and a second from Councilor Stoddick for approval of the request. So any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, I beat you to it, Marvin. Okay, very good. So that moves us on to?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, appreciate you being here tonight, Kent. You have a good night. So that moves us on to action item number three, um, under old business, and this was continued from the June 6th, 2023 hearing. Um, this is for Midland Meadows Subdivision, uh, for an annexation, cop plan map amendment.
Mayor?
Sony, yes.
This has been continued as well.
Oh, this one is, thank you, yes, I should have read the blue. So this one has been continued. We thought it was going to be a long night tonight, but we're just pushing it down the road for long nights in the future, so. This has been continued as well to August 1st of 2023.
Close the hearing on that.
Oh, so we'll close the hearing real quick on the last one, so we have a motion to close that hearing for, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So that is closed. Thank you, Madam Geyer. Okay, so item number three has been continued to August 1st, 2023, and so that does move us into new business. So action item number one, um, case number S U B 23-10, request by Hox Engineers for an amendment to the final plat for North Ranch Business Park Phase 1. And this is Alex that appears, is that correct? Okay, Mr. Jones, time is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Alex Jones, Associate Planner, 621 Cleveland Boulevard. Uh, today, the applicant is presenting North Ranch plat modification. And just to give a little more context, this is And just to give a little more context, this is a final plat modification of the North Ranch Business Park Phase 1. The applicant is requesting to modify the final plat of the North Ranch Business Park to better accommodate future commercial use in the parcel. Here you can see the plat modification, on the left is the original, on the right is the new, they're just splitting the one parcel in half. For Public Service and Utilities, utilities are available and will be provided once buildings come around. We received no response from any agencies, engineering had no comments on this. We did receive public notification from Alan Pritchett, and I believe he is here today, so he will speak more on that once it is time.
Yeah, thank you for the chance to.
Oh, actually, hold on, so, are you Alex?
Yeah.
Okay, so you actually, you'll need to wait, so we need to finish this.
Sorry.
And now, yeah, so we'll haul you up when it comes out. Yes, thank you.
All right, we're almost done here anyways. This final plat modification is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if council approves the request, that is subject to the facts, findings and facts found in the order decision. I stand for questions.
Very good, thank you so much. Any questions from council for staff at this time? Okay, so we will actually begin with, is it Kendi? Did I say that correct? So if you'll please come forward, so Kendi is the applicant on this request, so you'll be given 10 minutes for your testimony. And the time is yours. If you don't please mind, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, for the record, my name is Kendi Millsman, address is 2775 West Navigator Drive in Meridian, 83642. And good evening, Mayor and councilmen and women, thank you for having me tonight. With me tonight is Kyle Glockner, he's our licensed surveyor. And one thing that has changed on this plat since it's been submitted is that Ron Wright, the original PLS, is no longer with Horox Engineers, so Kyle will be taking that over. He has spoken with the city and has gotten approval to add a handwritten note making that change, so that we wouldn't need to start over with my signature's. So I am here representing AT North Ranch, or AT Industrial. They are here to do an amendment of the final plat for North Ranch Business Park Phase 1. They'd like to take the original plat that was, the original lot that was created by the original plat and divide that into two lots. The total acreage is about 30.8 acres, and it'd be split into about two equally sized lots. One would be just under 14 and a half acres, and Lot 2 would be a little over 15 and a half. The reason that they'd like to have it split into two is that they're currently constructing two buildings, one's currently in construction and the other building permit is ready to be pulled, and they'd like to have the option to potentially sell those individually in the future. The site was previously used for agriculture and is now for, is now zoned light industrial. The client does flexible use buildings, they do speculative development and not build to street, so as of now, there are no tenants signed up, but will be in the near future. And I stand for questions.
Thank you so much, is there any questions from council? Okay, very good. Do you mind if I pull up the plat again that was up there earlier? We can just leave that up there for reference. Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pritchett, now is the time, we appreciate the excitement.
All right.
So we usually don't see that here, so. So if you don't mind stating your name and address.
Sure, my name is. And, uh, property at 4012 Bob White, I believe it's the number four lot.
Can we get the plat, you just leave it up there, you need it up there?
I gotta switch to the sound.
Okay, so you go.
I am in the buffer zone there, as you can see that I almost have to go out to where the sprinkler system is turned on to get my 300 feet. I sent you a written copy, I think you should have it as part of your minutes today. What I'm asking for is since you're dividing the plat, I thought this would be a good time to come forward, I would request, what I requested that I be given the 300-foot buffer zone like everyone else, and that since this is the time when you're changing the plat, this would be a good time to do it. Also, as I recalled earlier, and I think it was the May meeting, that there were some other things that were talked about that was going to be included, that some of the buildings, as I understood, there's supposed to be a walking path and a bike path and so on that goes back behind my place. So what I'm, I guess what I'm concerned about is that you protect the liability of my property, and obviously I want to be a good neighbor, but on the other hand, I don't want to lose value on my property either. So what I'm asking is for you to alter that one plat so that it gives me a 300-foot buffer like everybody else, and if, in addition to that, I'd be concerned about what the buildings are on the other side, one tie, I thought I read earlier, it's supposed to be residential. I'm obviously, since it's listed as a, uh, industrial plot, right, that I make sure that we don't have a two-story building that's right behind me that'll be looking into, onto my property there. So in addition to the buffer, I'd like to see him put in landscaping and stuff that would shield that property from adjacent property. As I said earlier, I like to be a good neighbor, gonna be there a long time, so I would ask that you allow that change.
And so just to clarify and apologize, there may be questions, did you say a 300-foot? Have you, or what were you asking for again, for, on the change for the plat?
I'm sorry, can't catch all that.
So what, so what was your request again?
I'm requesting that they change that plat so I be given a free, a true 300-foot buffer on my property before it affects my property line.
So you're saying like you want a 300-foot new build buffer around your property, or what's the 300-foot?
I'm, I'm in trouble.
So the, so what would that 300-foot buffer?
Yeah.
Limit, what would not be allowed within that, that you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm asking for that 300-foot buffer to, to model out, to change that plat, I see you're splitting it, to change the plat behind my property to make sure I get a 300-foot buffer.
Okay, very good.
Is that clear?
And if I'm mistaken, and maybe even, I don't know if we could go to the web map also? And do you know, so real quick, that 300-foot number, so where did you come up with the 300-foot?
Uh, that's, it has on the plat that you sent out, that shows where the buffer zone is, you notice that the part that's on Bob White, at the end of Bob White, that actually encroaches on Lot 4, which is, uh.
You can zoom out a little more, Marlon.
I think you can see the line there, no?
I think that 300-foot buffer you're talking about is for notification of property owners within a 300-foot radius on any request like this. We have to notify property owners, Idaho code states we have to notify property owners within 300 feet is what, is what you're referencing.
Yes, right.
And so you're asking that that 300-foot buffer for notifications also be limit or restrict the property, use of the property within that 300 feet, is that what you are asking for? Trying to clarify.
You asked me if it's my property? Yeah.
Okay. And that is, and so you are?
I'm at 4012 Bob White.
Right here, correct?
I think that's the one right there. I'm onto cutting in the cul-de-sac at the, at the corner there.
Could you measure out 300 feet, Marlon, by chance, just to show what that would? Alex can take over and start driving. You're gonna have to zoom out a bit to get to it.
You notice that there are three properties here that are infected, Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6. I'm actually on 4. I assume that the, what you sent out shows the 300-foot buffer, and if it does, it shows that it encroaches on my property.
Yeah, so again, what that, all that 300-foot is, it shows the property owners that must be notified of any request on that property, so you have to go out 300-foot radius, send notifications to those property owners, so they know and are aware of hearings like this, so you can come and testify on that. So could you go straight from his southern property line south to measure 300 feet? Just so we can see the encumbrance that would be on the property.
Right where the curve is, those properties are right in the curve of Bob White. All of them are impacted, but mine more so than some of the others.
So that, so I just wanted to make sure, kind of, so that is more or less 300 feet.
Okay, I was looking at your drawing here, and it showed that it actually crossed over. Now there is a square line in the center, okay, and, uh, I'm not sure if you go from the corner of that square where the, where the plot is actually, that it goes 300 feet to my property.
Yeah, so that kind of, if you can see that map, so that shows if there was a 300-foot buffer requirement without any construction within that, it almost encompasses that entire property south of you. So there are, and we'll open, that's up for questions to the council, but just so you are aware, there are requirements, so your property would be zoned, it's going to be probably, I think it's R2, medium density residential, property to the south of you is zoned M1, light industrial. So there are requirements for separation, so when you have differing zonings that abut each other, there are additional requirements for setbacks. Usually there'd be no setback on an M1 light industrial property, which means they could go right to the property line. However, when it abuts a different zone, depending on the uses, they have additional setbacks that they have to do and provide, to provide a buffer. It's not 300 feet, but there is that buffer width, and I don't know if it's, I think it's either 20 feet or 30 feet, do you know, Alex, do you have that? The buffer would be between those two different line uses?
Mayor, I believe with it being a industrial use, it should be 30, it's either 20 or 30. I have seen the plans for that parcel to the south of this development, and they do have a landscape buffer, that development has already been approved. The parcel in question is actually to the east of the parcel we're currently measuring. The one directly south of this home is going to be a, another light industrial use. I believe it's just going to be a distribution yard.
So that piece that that's, mark is not the one that's being split?
Correct.
Okay, so sorry, which one is, can you highlight that or just?
Do you see where the building is to the east, the big white rooftop?
Yeah.
So it's to the left of that.
Okay, so this doesn't even abut this property, the one that's.
Correct.
Considered tonight, okay. So again, just, maybe do you mind using the touch, just so, Council McGee at home? You can clear that out, just hit the X on the measurement. And then, yep.
Where he's hovering his cursor over is the parcel in question currently, that is one, that would be the new parcel, once it's split.
Very good, Council McGee, can you see that at home?
I sure can, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you for clar, I apologize, I think I created some confusion there, I thought it was the piece just south of that, of his property, so it's actually over there, and so that's being requested to be split in half on that. So does that kind of make sense, so the piece, do you mind clicking on that piece? Marlon, yep, that one right there. So that's the piece that's under consideration tonight, to split that in half, so it does not abut your property on that, in that regard. So that's the piece that they're, and they're looking right now, the request tonight is just simply to split that property in half, not changing the zoning, the allowed uses, anything of that nature, but just looking to split that property in half. Does that make sense on that?
Okay, I'm not sure, you're saying you're making, you're gonna make accommodations?
So, I mean, that's up to the council if they're gonna approve the request or not, but I'm just making sure everybody understands what the request is. So that parcel highlighted on the map there, the request is to divide that property in half, not changing the zoning, the allowed uses, they're simply wanting to divide that property into two pieces.
Yeah, I see where you're dividing that, but my concern was just what the part that affects my property.
Yeah, and this piece does not touch your property, so if you can see where those lines are at, where your property is at, where that green, yep, right up there, so it does not actually abut your property, it is within the 300 feet to notify property owners, but it does not touch, your property lines do not touch.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, didn't catch all of that, but are you saying it's not affecting my property then?
Well, that, I mean, that's ultimately, I guess, up to the property owner, so I hate to say that, I'm just saying that this property under consideration tonight does not abut your property. So if you're concerned about they're building something that's gonna abut your property, they don't touch your property. So this parcel in particular, anything built on there will not abut your, your property.
All right, so I underfa, I understand that it's not gonna affect my property, is that right?
Anything, I guess you, anything.
Let me get my wife up here, so. Am I all right?
Yes, and just, so you are, so the other piece that, that we thought was this request, at first least that I did, so that is zoned light industrial, sounds like there is plans for that property, but they will have to comply with zoning standards for a separation between their property and yours, including a landscape buffer, and it sounds like Mr. Jones says he's seen those plans, and they are gonna be providing that landscape buffer on the backside of that property, so.
Okay, I think you also have the written thing that I sent earlier, right? That pretty much states what.
I have not seen it.
I have a copy of that.
Plating and zoning staff, did you guys see that? Was that an email that you?
Mayor and Council, that was included in the staff report for public comment.
Okay, so it was part of the, of the reports, we do have that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Very good, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks for buttoning up with me there.
No problem, no problem at all. Is it movement? Do you have any, if you'd like, you can come and provide any rebuttal, or it's up to you?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay, very good. Any questions from council for Kendi or for staff before we close public testimony? Okay, very good. Anything from you, Council McGee?
No, Mayor, thanks for asking.
There, you bet. Do we have a motion to close the public testimony portion of this hearing?
So moved.
A motion from Council Allgood and a second from Council Doughty to close the public testimony portion of this hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So with that, that moves us into deliberation. If you do have questions for staff, I hope I didn't confuse anybody up here too much on that, I think we got it all clarified. And thank Mr. Pritchett again for being here tonight, we appreciate you coming out and being an active part of this public hearing. So with that, any discussion or any motions from council would always be appropriate in regards to this request. And again, it's for final plat modification, taking the one piece of property, approximately 30 acres, and dividing it into two more or less equal pieces of property.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Doughty.
I'd like to make a motion, based upon the testimony and evidence and record on the matter, upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law, I move that sub 2310 for an amendment to the final plat for North Ranch Business Park Phase 1 be approved.
So we have a motion to a second. A motion from Council Doughty and a second one I'm gonna give to Council Register, so she's been trying to get in there. Again, this is for approval of the request subdivision plat, final plat modification. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, then we will open the voting for the motion for approval. Is it working on your end, Council McGee? It should, there we go, I think we got it. Does that green light mean that he's voted? Okay. So voting is then closed, and it did not show up, Council McGee, so just to clarify, your vote, was that in favor or against?
I'm voting in favor.
Yeah, very good, so just to clarify on that, so that is five in favor and no against, so that motion does pass unanimously. Do we have a motion to close that public hearing item?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
So a motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Register to close that public hearing item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. That moves us into... Are we, oh, see, we're at number two, right? Do business number two, okay. So action item number two. So action item number two, case number TE, time extension 23-9. Jason Ramsey, on behalf of 10th Avenue Heights LLC, this is for a six-month preliminary plat renewal and time extension, again, for 10th Avenue Heights preliminary plat. So with that, Morgan, looks like this one is yours, so turn the time over to you.
Good evening, Morgan Bisaw, Deputy Director for Planning and Zoning. The application in front of you this evening is for a time extension for 10th Avenue Heights preliminary plat. My god, this is sensitive. Um, this is for a six-month extension. The two-and-a-half acre property is on 10th Avenue, approximately 150 feet south of the intersection between South 10th Avenue and Amber Street, on the west side of the property, highlighted there on the map. So the project consists of eight fourplex buildings and one duplex building. This is a section of the preliminary plat that was approved. There were no concerns by engineering, fire, or mapping with the time extension. City Code does allow time extensions. The first one would be administrative, second one has to come before council, so this is their second time extension. The original preliminary plat, subdivision 20-10, was approved by the city council on March 15, 2021. No changes to the layout of the plat are proposed at this time. They have had a one-year time extension in the past that was approved on May 27, 2022, and expired May 27, 2023. So this is actually a time extension and renewal. However, the application was submitted prior to the extension, expiring, it just took a little bit of time to be noticed publicly to come before the council. The applicant has completed almost all their infrastructure, and the six months is just to allow time to process the final plat application, which the city has received. So that should be in front of the council here shortly. Uh, staff finds that the proposed request is in compliance with Caldwell City Code and is consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And staff recommends that if council approved the request, that it is subject to the conditions as described in the findings that were in your staff report. And with that, I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Very good, so I think you answered the one question that I was gonna ask, and it was, it was going to be in regards to what all has been put in place. It sounds like sewers in, waters in, the majority of the property's done, just the paving, more or less, that's left to be completed, is that correct?
That was correct at the time of application submitted, it might even be done now.
Okay, very good, excellent. Okay, so this is just a time extension to allow for the completion of this project. Um, that sounds like it's very near, almost finished on that. So question, any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Stodick.
Mr. McDonald, I think this seems approved after my first term, but I remember vaguely that there was a traffic issue, that we didn't, we didn't believe the traffic study at that time because of the, uh, the, all the bus service that comes out of there, and also, uh, the expansion of that early train center, and the construction of Cumberland, and also the current construction behind the veterinary office there too, is, have we done a revised traffic study on that, or are we just going by the old one?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Manstodick, we have not revised the traffic study, so we've been relying on the one that was existing. If we feel like that things have changed significantly, uh, then we certainly have the prerogative to renew or take a closer look at that. It's a little difficult in some areas of the city right now to do a traffic impact study because of the construction going on. The traffic patterns are not typical to what we would normally see. But, but that would be, uh, i- in my opinion, that it's, I don't think it's changed significant, significantly enough that we would need to redo the traffic impact study, but we're certainly willing to take a closer look at that if you desire.
I'll depend on your expertise for that, thank you.
And this one, if I remember right, had the access that is supposed to match up with Easy Street on the other side of the, of 10th Avenue, does that sound correct? Either Mr. McDonald or Morgan, either one? Does that?
That is correct?
Okay, very good. We're gonna put in the budget for next year, a microphone, is that alright, Counsel? As we start our budget workshops tomorrow, so we can get it, two microphones for the table, so you don't have to share as much, so we'll work on that for you guys. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, very good, then, as much as this is just a time extension for that six months, um, for the completion, very similar to the one that we just heard a few before this on that regard. So with that, I stand for a motion to close the public testimony.
Mr. Mayor, I think Counsel Register had a question.
Actually, I just have a curiosity question, actually. So in a case like this where it comes forward, um, can we know what the first extension was for?
So yeah, we can definitely ask staff for that. Do you know on the first time extension? Cause there was the administrative time extension, it sounds like, and?
You said that they had already asked for another one previously?
Um, I don't have it right in front of me, but I can pull it up to see what the request was for.
I was just kinda curious, and then the other curiosity type question I had, just for my own education, when they ask for a time extension like this, if the council says no, then what happens?
Then, that's a good question, um, because to be honest, we're one of the only cities that requires just to come to council, because as mentioned, there's, um, obviously millions of dollars in, in land, and then if it does, I mean, you do have that prerogative, if it does get denied, then what happens to that property? It either stays, you know, fallow, undeveloped, um, or they'd have to come back for a new request, um, at that time, so. It would open, it opens up a lot of, and attorney can weigh in on that, cause obviously there's a lot of money spent on their behalf, I mean, that they've done, and obviously they're motivated to finish it, but sometimes things do happen, so it, it, that's a good question, because yeah, what does happen? They'd have to basically start over, um, even though they've got quite a significant investment in the ground, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, because it is, yeah, what, what happens on that, so.
Mayor, I'm not sure if you were, uh?
If you had anything to add on that, you're more than welcome.
Okay, so certainly the, our code provides, the state code provides that cities can do their own subdivision ordinance. Ours provides for this time extension procedure. And the preliminary plat does expire if you don't grant the extension. Now, our code also provides criteria that, on which the extension should be granted or denied, and so a developer at least has some confidence that, hey, if I'm meeting these criteria, then I'm entitled to have this extension granted. But on the flip side, if they aren't meeting the criteria, then it may very well get denied, so, um, exactly how that would play out, I'm not aware of that happening at this late stage of a preliminary plat, but, um, that's what our code says you're permitted to do, and so if you find that, based on the criteria in the code, it's not appropriate to extend, then that's the decision you would make, and we would, we would roll with that and figure it out.
And I looked, um, to see if they'd stated any reasonings in their letter submitted for the application, and, and this is in your, this is in the pack, so this is no new information, but this is in their, um, application states, Ramsey Construction is requesting a time extension to grant into the project. Development work at this location is nearing completion, and we anticipate vertical construction to begin within 45 days. And that was on May 10th. Please contact Ramsey Construction with any questions. So it doesn't give any specific as to the reason why, just that they're very near completion. And it was mentioned, that was actually probably just over 45 days ago, so on that process.
Completion of starting the construction?
Uh, yes, that'd be completion of the, of the groundwork to complete the preliminary plat.
Yeah, I was just curious, and it may, might come up in other areas, but it seems like some of our codes are kinda weird.
Yeah, so it is. I know that this is part of the code amendments, I know that the PNC is looking at to try to simplify our code, um, and kinda make it just flow better, cause it's a great question, what does happen? I mean, they've spent so much money, put so much time of it, effort into it, is that gonna come back on the city? Is it going back on them? And so those are amendments that Planning and Zoning is looking at to try to make our code a little bit more seamless and, and that, so. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, uh, did we close the public testimony portion? We did not, okay, so do we have a, did we have a motion for it?
Started, I think, and then?
We had that question, huh? Okay, so what is?
I move to close the public testimony portion with this.
Oh, wait, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion from Counsel Register, and a second from Counsel Doty to close the public testimony portion of this hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, so that moves us into, um, if there are any additional questions, I know that we did get a lot of those answered, but if you have any other questions of staff for this time, or any discussion or any motions in regards to this request for this time extension.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion?
Counsel Doty.
Based upon the testimony, evidence, and record in this matter, and upon the finding of facts and conclusions of law, I move that 23-9 for preliminary plat time extension for 10th Avenue Heights be approved.
Very good, do we have a?
To the condition.
Perfect, do we have a second? A motion from Counsel Doty, and a second from Counsel Stodick for approval of the time extension request with the conditions as outlined. So any discussion on that motion? With that, then the voting will be open. Okay, all votes are cast, and that motion passes unanimously. To have a motion to close that public hearing item?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
A motion from Counsel Stodick, and a second from Counsel Register to close that public hearing item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And motion passes. Okay, and we are now to action item number three. Um, this is for proposed bill and ordinance amendment, chapter three, article three of the Caldwell City Code. Mr. Waterman, are you able to do this? So he's coming forward, just, um, I'll go ahead and read this by title only. So this is, as you all are aware, Mr. Orton is retiring from the city, and so with that, we looked at, um, the structure of our Public Works Department, and felt it was appropriate time to, I know we've talked about this actually for quite some time. In most cities, the city engineer is not in an appointed position, but it falls under the Public Works Director. However, with Rob and Brenton, those positions felt just move forward until there was a change. We didn't foresee one for many years, however, that obviously has changed, and so that brings us before you this evening, and some other just very minor changes as well. The code still calls out a city treasurer-finance director, and those are two separate positions, so it would separate those, clarifying that in there as well, so. That is, and then one other thing, and sorry, Mr. Waterman, I don't need to steal all your thunder. One other cleanup that we're looking at is under terms of office. Currently, as you are aware, um, appointments have always been done on the calendar year, which, as we saw when we all came into office, we created a little bit of difficulty where if you have a new mayor coming in, and they have to appoint directors the very night that they're getting sworn in, can be difficult. So this would change it from a calendar year to a fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends September 30th, so allows, if a new mayor does come in, allows him, you know, at least eight, nine months to get to know those appointed officials and see how things are working before they have to reappoint them for their next term, on that, so. Okay, sorry, Mr. Waterman, you go ahead and fill in everything I left out.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the mayor did not leave anything out, so this ordinance does the three things he described, it removes the city engineer as an appointed official. There's, the ordinance has city treasurer, finance director, with finance director slash two, and then finance director again. That doesn't match exactly what the city code says. This particular code, 030301, recently went through a change with the director of aviation. And so anyway, that's just, I assume, a codifier's error, but this is not, the ordinance does not remove the finance director as an appointed official, that is certainly true. It does, it does at least codify this mode of operation of having appointments for appointed officials occurring at the fiscal year. Of course, this is always the case with appointed officials, we serve at the pleasure of the mayor and council, that's just how it is, and so this isn't creating some limitation on the mayor and council to exercise the authority that they already have under the code, but it at least does set out, um, sort of a pattern that gives everyone some breathing room and a chance to, to get to know the appointed officials before they feel like they're obliged to make a decision on that. And then lastly, it, section three of this ordinance deletes chapter three, article 21 of the city code, which previously contained provisions about the appointed, uh, city engineer. So, if you have any questions, we'll have you to answer them.
Very good, any questions for Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counsel Allgood.
For you or Mr. Waterman? So, as time goes on, and, and we keep the same appointed officials, is the intention still that we would reappoint them every year? As we have in the past, cause we had discussed making that a longer distance in between? I don't see any language in here that would change it to every third year. So is the intention with this code still to appoint every year?
So, no, that's a great question. So the code has never stated you had to do it every year, just how it kind of was done. It talked about you did it at the calendar year. So we did, uh, with these last appointments, we did start to stagger those, um, and it was more of like a three-year kind of term, I guess you could say, so that way you had every, every year, there was three to four appointed officials that would come before the council, and then their term would be for that three years. And so, um, then the next year, the three would come, and so they did, in essence, we, we did start doing that this last, in January of this year. So if you remember, there were some that were appointed through 2024, some through 2025, 2026, and 2027. So it kind of broke them out, um, into four sections, I guess you could say, um, and that they would come back before council. Three or four would come before council every year, um, but it wouldn't be, not every one of them comes every single year, but that's not detailed in the code, um, that's just at the purview and the pleasure of the council of how they wish to appoint those positions.
And that's kind of what I was getting at, is your intention not to do it every year? I mean, cause you, over a period of time, everybody will catch up to their appointed time.
Yeah.
And so is your intention just to kind of let it go unless we need to address something, or what are your? I realize that's the ways out.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, if it goes good, I'd to continue with, so for example, in 2024, whichever ones are coming forward, would be for that for a three-year, so their appointment would be through 2020, well, I guess it'd be October, September 30th of 2027. And so that way, it's not appointing every elect, or every appointed official would not come forward every year on that. You would just have that number, um, those people coming back in regards to that. And then as new ones do come in, you could obviously change that date and have them come back that next fiscal, if you want to have like a quicker review of the new ones coming in, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, I'll go ahead and read this by title only. Again, this is ordinance number 3516, bill number 32. An ordinance enacted by the Caldwell City Council amending chapter three, article three, section 331, pertaining to the appointment of appointed officials, amending chapter three, article three, section 333, pertaining to the terms of office for appointed officials. Amending chapter three of the Caldwell City Code by repealing article 21 in its entirety, providing for an effective date, providing for severability, and repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders, and parts thereof in conflict herewith. So with that, do we have any discussion, or do we have any sponsors of this bill and ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Allgood.
I'll sponsor bill number 32, ordinance number 3516, and move for its approval, and approve the summary for publication.
Very good, do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion from Counsel Allgood, and a second from Counsel Doty for sponsorship and approval of bill number 32, ordinance number 3516, for passage on its first reading by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, the voting is open. And all votes are cast, and so voting is closed, and that motion does pass unanimously. And that moves us into action item number four under New Business, and this is for bill number 33, ordinance 3517, to annex Mandalay Ranch subdivision phase four into the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District. We request to move for its passage by title only. And actually, then four, and five, and six are all the same, is that right?
That's right.
So Counsel McGee, I know you're not here, but you have expertly crafted these into doing these all at once. Would you like to make a motion to do that this time as well?
I can try, Mr. Mayor, I'm having a little bit of the documents, a little, font's a little small here, so I can't see it very well. Hold on just one moment, and I'll get it. Alright, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll try this, and, um, if it doesn't work, we'll try it again. I move that action item four, action item five, action item six, all be considered at the same time with the vote applying to all three of those action items.
That sounds great to me. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
So a motion from Counsel McGee, and a second from Counsel Register, and again, this is to consider action items number four, five, and six simultaneously with the vote for one being cast for the vote for all. So any discussion on that motion? Okay, and with that, the voting is open. So real quick, is that, let's see, so that motion passes. Four, five, and six, okay, very good. Okay, so that passes in regards to that, so, um...
You just need to read the title by one.
Read the title by, okay, and I can just read one of them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this for bills, bills numbers 33, 34, 35, ordinance numbers- Okay, so this for bills, bills numbers 33, 34, 35, ordinance numbers 3517, 3518, and 3519. So these are ordinances of the city of Caldwell, Idaho, annexing a portion of property within the corporate city limits into the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District of the city of Caldwell, Canyon County, Idaho, and changing the boundaries thereof, directing the city engineer to alter the boundary map accordingly, declaring the intent of the city to pool water rights and apply a uniform method of allocating assessments and charges and providing an effective date. So that would be for all three of those. And those, that did pass unanimously for those three items. So with that, moves us into action item number seven, and this is for resolution number 166-23.
We need to vote on it.
Yeah, we did.
We still have to vote on it.
Did we not, was that not the?
He voted to.
We voted to put them all together, but we didn't.
Okay.
We need to vote.
Oh, okay. That's all right. So now, do we have a motion, I guess? We'll do that, to a motion for approval of these bills and ordinances.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Doughty.
I move that we consider bill number 34, bill number 33, 34, and 35, with a request to move for its passage by title only. Is that how we're saying that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there you go.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Allgood for passage of bills number 33, 34, and 35 by title only. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the role on that one?
Allgood?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Stockey?
Yes.
Register?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Very good. So that motion passes unanimously. So now we are on action item number seven. This is resolution 166-23, authorizing a partial vacation of Tate's Way as a conditional approval, and allow the vacation to be finalized once all items is required by the city engineer and conjunction with said vacation have been approved. Mr. McDonald, I'm guessing you're going to present on this one?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Marlon is bringing up the exhibit, and you have it in your packet. What this is, is the, the property owner at Tate's Rents, uh, I don't, I don't recall the property owner's name, but they own all the property behind Tate's Rents, and I think there's about five acres back there. And they have gotten to the point now where they would like to develop the rest of that, and they have a few larger industrial, light industrial or commercial type uses that they want to do back there. But the city has an odd configuration with public right of way that has been dedicated, and so their request is that a portion of that can be, could be vacated, and we've taken a close look at that, and we determined that what they are proposing to vacate would be acceptable. We have asked them to maintain the portion of right of way that is in line with Gray Lane, and that would allow us to push that road through all the way up to Eustick at some future time if that were, if the adjacent properties to the west, wherever to, uh, redevelop. Can you scroll down to the aerial exhibit? And, and so you can see in the aerial exhibit there, Gray Lane is the road that runs along in parallel to the railroad tracks, and then those two green lines. The two green lines.
The microphones are too high.
Just hit it really hard. It's never, that fixes my TV at home.
So the two green lines you see there represent the right of way that exists, and then the, the red area represents the right of way that exists going down toward the boulevard. And what we have determined is the vacate, that red portion is acceptable, and that is simply because we want to maintain the gray lane alignment, like I was mentioning, so that it could continue through on the west side in the future, possibly at some future date. But more so, really what we want is any development that's going on back there near that cul-de-sac, we want them to take access down onto Happy Day, where there's a traffic light onto the boulevard. We don't want them necessarily coming down to the boulevard at that location there, where you see that intersection, simply because it's not controlled. And so, we felt that if they, as, as they propose this vacation and a development at that location, we, we don't have an issue with that from a transportation standpoint. There are some utilities in the lower portion adjacent to the Tate's Rents building itself, but I don't think there are any utilities in that red portion there that would have to be contemplated. However, with that said, the, the step here is that we, if council is amenable to this vacation, then the developer still has to go through the vacation process, and they still have to verify that there's no utility conflicts, and they have to address all those other things before the actual vacation will be granted. And then at that time, once everything's been addressed, then an ordinance would come back to city council for final approval. This is just so that if, if council's willing to approve this conceptually, then that gives them the confidence to move forward on a development and start planning for the future as if that were to be vacated. But they still have a lot of steps they have to go through that engineering will be overseen to make sure that easements or whatever's necessary is put in place.
Okay. I'll let you ask it. Very good. Thank you so much. So we have a question. We're going to see if Council Stockey gets it.
Just so I'm clear on this. So when this gets developed, we're going to require them to go through the cul-de-sac street there? Is that all right?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stockey, that's a good question. They will have access to the front, so they will also have access down to the boulevard adjacent Tate's Rents. But they will have development that's back behind those, those green right of way lines, and they will be taking access primarily through the cul-de-sac and then pushing out to the traffic light at Happy Day.
Okay. About halfway down on my right, is that the, the kitty and dog thing down there? Is that right?
Correct. So right on the edge of the screen there, on the right-hand side, is the, I think it's the, what's about the animal shelter?
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Was that your question?
It isn't.
It isn't?
It is not.
Well, we'll select you. Go ahead and ask it then.
I just wanted to ensure that if there are utilities found in that right of way, that the city will not be responsible for moving those utilities if we relinquish the right of way.
That is correct, and I failed to mention, the cost associated with this, putting the legal descriptions together and any easements, that's all the burden of the property owner. And if there are any utilities that are there, those have to be preserved, or they have to be relocated at the expense of the property owner. There should be no expense to the city at all for any of this.
And then allows us to put it back on the tax roll. Okay, yes, Council Allgood.
So Rob, Tate's Way will remain as is, correct? It'll be a permanent dead-end street, if I'm looking at that correctly?
Yeah, it's, it'll basically serve as a driveway that goes in, and then they will have, at that location, at the end of the existing road will be a driveway going into a development there. Correct.
So what, are, are they or anybody else going to be required to install some type of turnaround? The public turns into Tate's, Tate's Way after hours, or that nobody's open, can they, is there a way for them to turn around and get out of there, or what's the plan there?
That is a very good question, and I'm happy you brought that up. Typically, when you have a public road that, that terminates, there is some sort of a turnaround required, and that is by emergency services, the fire department or whoever. And so as they develop this site, we would look to make sure that there is appropriate spacing or the dimensions are existing so that there can be a successful turnaround for any traffic that may need to get out of there, that may pull in.
Okay, that's part of the deal. That's part of the requirement?
Yeah, and that would be part of the, yeah, and that's not specifically noted, but I'm happy you brought that up. That is something, as they develop the site out, that we will be looking for to make sure that there is a turnaround available for whoever may turn in, or, or if a truck or someone turns in, or that's a little bit larger, they're able to get out without having to back out onto the boulevard, for example.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, and those could be in the form of like a cul-de-sac, another hammerhead as well, as well, what we'd like to call the Snoopy turnaround, where it kind of goes up, you have the Snoopy nose, so you can back up, back in. So those are all very defined in building your fire code.
I could just see a semi-truck pulling in there, and everybody's closed, there's nowhere to go, and then they're trying to back out of that on the road.
Yep, so, okay, very good. Yeah, that was a great question. So thank you so much.
And Mr. Mayor, I wasn't sure if the applicant's here. Um, I don't know if you want to speak to anything. No, okay. Okay. So the applicant is here in case there are additional questions.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any questions from council for either Mr. McDonald or for the applicant? Okay, I think we got a message. Anything from you, Council McGee?
Not right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Very good. And this is just a resolution, so I don't think we need to close any public testimony portion, if I'm not mistaken. Very good. So that would move it straight into council for your discussion, questions of staff, and for any motions.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Allgood.
I move that we consider resolution 166-23 and move for its approval.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion from Council Allgood and a second from Council Register for approval of resolution 166-23, authorizing a partial vacation of Tate's Way as was described during the presentation. So any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, the voting is open. And all votes have been cast, so voting is closed. And that motion passes unanimously. So with that, moves us into.
Seven eight.
That's right. I thought we were done, but we're not.
Should be quick.
Okay, seven eight. So, this is again the amended agenda from consent, was consent number five, approved resolution declaring surplus hydraulic extrication equipment at the Caldwell Fire Department to be donated to Sand Hollow Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Council, Rick Fawley, Fire Chief, here to address and for your consideration, council, some surplus extrication equipment that is surplus to our needs in the fire department. Our request is that we donate these to a mutual aid partner, Sand Hollow. The intent of this donation is so that this equipment can be used for emergency response in the areas that are on the north border between Caldwell and Sand Hollow. We're developing relationships with the, with that department, with all the other agencies that are here in the valley, and this will support those needs for extrication in that area, and I'm open to any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Doughty.
Just in full disclosure, I called the chief today and just asked him, I wanted to ensure what benefit that the citizens of Caldwell will receive from this. I think you've explained it fairly well. I just want to add that in those outlining, outlining border areas in which our citizens travel a lot, that this would go a long ways if they're in need of some critical care at that moment. And so, the value is roughly.
Approximately $1,000.
$1,000, and I think that's well worth the price to help our citizens out if they're just outside the border of our town, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any, any other questions for Chief Fawley?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just add one other piece that's kind of an interesting, kind of discussion piece for council. As we look at the call volume that Chief Ingram mentioned over the last five days with the, with the weekend, we've shared resources with Middleton on three fires, Nampa with two fires, Parma came and helped us in a fire that was adjacent to Sand Hollow, and just this morning, we had resources in both Nampa and Middleton. And so we're really starting to see this shared approach for resources on the west side of the valley. It's pretty exciting, you know, it's very similar to that conversation we had about the SWAT teams working together, the fire departments are working together as well. So, future looks bright.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate all you do, chief. Okay, very good. So, with that, this is again a resolution, so we don't need to close any public testimony on that. So do we have a motion for approval of this resolution?
I move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Register for approval of the resolution. Let me get up to it.
These are so.
Again, this is declaring surplus hydraulic extrication equipment to be donated to Sand Hollow Fire Department. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open. And all votes have been cast, so voting is closed, and it passes unanimously. Okay, now that moves us into action item number eight, consider acceptance of the finance report.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Register.
I move that accounts payable in the amount of $6,652,14389, represented by check numbers 170489 through 170869, and payroll for the amount of $575,07908, represented by check numbers 38720 through 38744, and direct deposits be accepted, payments approved, and vouchers filed in the office of the city clerk.
Very good. Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Council Register and a second from Council Doughty for acceptance of the finance report. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. That moves us into council reports. Council Register.
I get to go first again. Um, the only thing I have to say is I'm really sorry I couldn't be there yesterday, so I wore my outfit today. Um, sorry about that. And um, the budget meetings start tomorrow, and those are public.
Yes.
I just wanted to put that out there for anybody who wanted to, I wanted to make sure they're public, and then put that out there to anybody who wanted to attend those.
Yes, and those are going to be at the airport terminal off, off of Linden Road, so.
Being at four tomorrow?
At 4:00 PM, yep. So, yes, thank you for mentioning that. Yes, those are definitely open to the public, and we will be streaming those as well on that. So, okay, very good. Council Stockey.
Mr. Mayor, just like comment on the Fourth of July parade, I think Mr. Doughty and I enjoyed it, along with his two daughters, and we got to meet a lot of people that we didn't know before, which is good for us. And only had one request from several people that, why don't we have a marching band in the parade? And I said, I'll let the mayor know, so there you go. Thank you.
Can we put that on the council for next year to start practicing and getting ready for that? So.
You gonna do the zoos, or are we doing?
Council Doughty.
I would just, obviously, a lot's been said already tonight, but I'm just so proud of our police and fire. They did an exceptional job through the Fourth of July, and I just see us working better and better together and improving our city, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much. Council Allgood.
Well, the only problem I have with the police department is these guys are looking younger and younger and younger. Holy cow. We, we were, we were visiting with a group of them at the fireworks, and holy cow, it's like they graduated high school last year or something. It, it just makes me feel terribly old. Um, the fireworks were wonderful. We, we go every year, and, and even, even with the road closure, it wasn't any big deal. Getting in and out was fine. Um, and so thank you again for everybody that puts that on. That was awesome. That's all I got.
Good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Uh, Council McGee?
No, thank you.
Very good. Excellent. Um, so yeah, Fourth of July was fantastic. Um, we appreciate, I know there was a couple of questions about the location of it for this year, and appreciate the police department, the highlight to Captain Rosen, who's not here this evening, but he put together a very strategic plan on how to, you know, properly address the issues with the road closures, the construction going on, and they implemented that. So we appreciate all the time and effort that he did into that. We had several meetings leading up to that with myself, Chief Fawley, Captain Rosen, Chief Ingram, Mr. McDonald as well, and Char, Jack Center PIO, to just make sure that the word was out, maps were out, identifying the areas to park, using the shuttle bus, things of that nature. So we'll be doing some debriefing this coming weeks to see how everything went, and make sure that we can implement and do an even better job next year. Fireworks were phenomenal. I know that the cost of those is, everything else has gone up, so there was an increase in that from years past, but I think it was, it's always well worth it for the amount of people that come from all over the Treasure Valley and the state of Idaho, really, this, it's a great time, and they were extremely well done. So we appreciated that, and it was fun to be there, be a part of that. Update on the swimming pool. So we are, and I'm looking at Ray Lynn, our wonderful finance director, so we're working towards getting an RFP. Is that correct? Out, not an RFP, a bid. There we go. I didn't think it was our, so we're working on getting a bid out with our new software system we're acquiring so we can get more bids from different parties throughout the state, and perhaps even beyond that. So that is in the works, and should be going out in the next couple of weeks. Was that?
We're pushing forward, and we have the contract documents.
Excellent. So we're looking at that getting out this week for that bid. So that's, that's great news. So that'll give us a good idea as we're going into budget session of the cost to do that remodel on it.
Is, is that for the full remodel or just for the repairs?
That would be for the full remodel of the pool itself, so not the slides and things like that we want to do in the future, but that would be getting the pool back up and going, looking at even potentially including, depending on the cost, the new locker rooms that we'd like to do there as well. Does definitely need a new mechanical room. That's a pretty much a requirement for that, but it would include all of that. uh, but it would include all of that, so.
Would this potentially be something that could be done by next season?
Potentially. So that's what we're trying to get this out, um, by this week, next week, so that it, it would be very tight, but we would hope that it could be open, and maybe not May twenty-seventh or whatever it is, but hopefully even by July fourth.
The Fourth of July.
Yep, exactly. So it could be a great, a great celebration.
The contract that's going out says, uh, for the Fourth of July.
Yeah, so we're excited for that, 'cause I know that's a lot of questions that come up, so we're actively working on that and, and getting that out, and we're excited to put that out there, and we, we expect to get some, some bids on that, hopefully more than last time, which was one. So it helps to have a little competition in the game on that, so we're looking forward to that. Um, then just one last quick comment, um, just for council's awareness, so we've had a lot of, well, a few people reach out talking about hotels in downtown Caldwell. Um, I know there was the one, and our good gentleman on the Urban Annoil Commission will be hearing from, um, the RFP that did go out, there was no takers on that one site next to the Tillian, um, which is off of Main Street. Um, we did have developers come to town, um, that site, they did not feel was the right site for the hotel, so they did not ultimately put a bid in for that, but they found other property in the vicinity that they would love to put a boutique hotel on. Um, so what we're gonna do is, gonna do an RFQ, and what that is, is a request for qualifications, so it's very simple, standard procedure, doesn't tie us into anything, it just allows us to know who's interested, what they put, at what location, bring that to council for discussion or review. So it just gives us options, gives the council options to look at, see what is the developing world, the developers, what are they looking at, what do they consider a better site for that? And then that would come to council for your review and to see if you like it or don't, or want them to do a little bit more. So that'll be going out this next week, and it doesn't tie us to anything, just allows people to make presentations and to give you options of what we want to do downtown for that. But yes, it's very exciting for that, so we're looking forward to that, and believe we'll get, we think we should, could get multiple, we know one for sure that's very interested in submitting that, and some very nice upscale hotels in downtown would be great, so. And that's all I have for this evening, so, one minute over. Oh, and Ms. Guyer's gonna make a quick comment. Do you want to go up there, just use this?
Oh, I'm, Mr. McGee can hear me. Is this on? Hello? Is that on? Okay. So I received an email today requesting that I forward this to council members for a couple of concerns, and so I just mentioned that I would probably do this tonight at the council meeting, and then I'll respond to him accordingly. But the gentleman's name is Jeff Lee, and he said he had tried to contact some of you previous, so you might have received some emails from him. Um, he lives in Cirrus Point. But he writes that according to the information I have received, the city has weak ordinances that help contractors and developers avoid mitigation with dust and, uh, new building areas. As many of the city's staff may be aware, Cirrus Point community has had many difficulties and complaints on this issue. So, um, Ashley Newbury called me today, um, and mentioned that, and I think Mr. Lee had actually contacted the engineering department this morning in regards to some concerns, and they explained to him that actually staff has reviewed the ordinance, and it's very similar to what other municipalities in Treasure Valley also require as far as mitigation of dust, including the city of Boise. And so, um, they all have techniques to minimize the dust, and they have actually visited the site, is what Ashley mentioned to me, and that all the mitigation efforts from the contractors are in place. Is that true, Rob, that you want to add anything to that?
And by the way, councillor Doty mentioned he may get you two mics over there additional, so try your best behavior, you might get even a third mic for the table.
Nice. Um, uh, Ms. Guyer, yes, I, I did speak with Ashley and Brian, the inspector, um, just before I came over here, and they had mentioned that, uh, from, from their perspective, from their review and site visit, it appeared that everything was in order. Um, and the, uh, the compliance that we have with all the dust mitigation, that, that all stems back to requirements from DEQ, and so we comply with what they require. And, and every construction site from time to time may, may become a little bit delinquent, but, but our, our inspectors are constantly watching to make sure that they're, um, meeting all the requirements, and in this case, it appeared that they were when they visited.
So if there's no other comments, I'll reiterate that to Mr. Lee. And the second issue he brought up was the city's support, um, in regards to proposed Sunny Slope Music Venue. This one here, he was thinking that, he was hoping that, um, they would be working, the city would be working with the county, um, to reconsider that support letter that was issued. And so I, uh, got on the phone today to Steve Jenkins from Economic Development and asked if there was a letter that had gone to the county in regards to that. He said, yes, there was a letter, it was not site-specific, it was just the fact of that it would be probably a great idea to have some type of venue, um, in regards to the Sunny Slope area, but not necessarily at one particular site, because there is difficulties with traffic and, and road issues and traffic whatnot that would be there. So, um, with that in mind, I again will let him know that the city has not, um, said anything about a, a certain subject site, but just that we are in support of the concept. Is, and I don't know if there was any other comments from council members or the mayor?
And I could touch on that too, so yeah, I think there was some confusion, or some people interpreted it meaning that it was support of that specific application for that property out on Sunny Slope in that area, and that was not the case.
Right.
It was, you know, Mr. Jenkins was very cautious, very clear about the concept. He's met with them, which is, it is a great concept, it's like you gotta get the right location on. He's worked with them, tried to propose sites within actually the city limits of Caldwell, this would be kind of like for an intimate, um, kind of amphitheater-style concert venue,